Welcome and good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us for our public hearing tonight. My name is Ryan Blasek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'm just going to be helping to moderate the public hearing. Tonight's hearing is on the Pine Lake Drawdown, Gunplain and Prairieville Townships, Elegant and Berry Counties. Before we get moving and introducing our staff who are on the line tonight, I just have a couple logistical things to go through. This is kind of our agenda for the evening. First, we're going to go through the introduction, which we're doing right now. And then the important thing to know is that we're actually going to be doing this in two parts. The first part is an informational session where the applicant is going to present some information on the proposed project. Shouldn't last more than five, 10 minutes or so, and then we'll go into a question and answer session that should take us around 6:30. And we'll probably end it right at about 6:30 to give us plenty of time for the second part, which is the official hearing portion. That's where you'll have an opportunity to make an official statement for the record on this permit application. And we're also going to talk about ways to submit an official comment other than making a statement tonight where you can find other information and who to contact with further questions. All right, a couple other things to know if you haven't done a hearing like this with us before that all lines are muted during the hearing. At this time, you can submit any questions in the questions box in the Zoom toolbar at that question answer session that we have after the presentation. You'll also have an opportunity to raise your hand in Zoom. And we'll talk about how to do that and how we're going to do that question answer part a little bit later on. And also just here where we are recording this hearing, the recording of the hearing will be on our YouTube channel in just a few days after the hearing tonight. So with that, I'd like to invite Jason Combs, who is our Eagle staff on the line tonight, to introduce himself.
Good evening. My name is Jason Combs. I'm with the Eagles Water Resources Division. I'll be serving as the hearing officer for tonight. Thank you for, thank you for attending.
All right, thank you, Jason. All right, with that, we're going to move into the presentation part of tonight's hearing. So if Jim Doll is on the line or representative or agent, we will unmute you so you can go through your slides here. We have a few slides here. We'll try to locate you in the audience. If you're calling in by phone, just select pound two and to raise your hand in Zoom and we'll unmute you. If you're on the line and you're an agent for the drain commissioner, and we're not seeing your name, please raise your hand. It looks like I do have a hand raised. All right, it looks like Jim's on there. Okay, Jim, we are going to unmute you on our end, and you should be unmuted.
Can you guys hear us?
Oh, yeah. Yep, sounds good. Jim, I have your slides here, and I'm, so if you just want to let me know when to move on to the next one as you go through them, I can switch the slides for you.
We're gonna have, you can go to the first slide, please. We're gonna have, on behalf of Jim Doll, we're gonna have Chad McCurelli, who is the applicant or agent, I should say, on this one here. He'll go over a little bit in detail, the permit figures.
So can everybody hear me?
Yep, sounds good.
Hey, so this Dan Fredericks was saying, my name is Chad McCurelli. I work at Landon Resource Engineering. Dan and I have worked on this project with Jim Doll kind of since 2019, when the initial kind of complaints came in. Kind of gone through a couple different iterations. We've had a couple of public hearings with you guys with stakeholders around Pine Lake kind of regarding a project. Year or so back, we did, we had another permit application that we did to test upon like test an infiltration pond adjacent to Pine Lake. So now we've kind of moved on to another kind of what we hope is our final alternative here. So the overview map you see there is basically what we're trying to kind of get permitted here tonight or get permitted through this public hearing process. That map is facing up is north, so you see kind of down by Pine Lake there near like finally boat motor would be a proposed kind of inlet or outlet from Pine Lake that is going to go from there to be gravity fed down to a gravel pit, which is, you know, approximately 15 feet below the lake where it'll kind of discharge via infiltration. The structure, you can change slides there, Jason. So this is kind of a zoom in on kind of what we're proposing down by kind of highlight boat motor. It's the initial inlet's going to be kind of a weave structure, and then it's going to go into what you see there up on the top, on the top right, which is kind of a structure with boards in it. Or we're with removable boards in it. There's quite a bit of adjustment in that that agro drain board structure there where we could, we could set the level all the way from like 892 and bring it down to what is the legal lake level 80.5. Kind of just for this sake here, we want to kind of get this structure kind of permitted, and then we can kind of make, you know, adjustments from there. So but what you see there is kind of the layout of that structure. We are trying to permit a test pump operation as well for this in this permit application. Where we could take that and kind of test this before bring it down to the gravel bit through some test pumping. And kind of make sure that everything works as we anticipate. So that's kind of, that's kind of the overview. I don't know if Jim has anything he wants to add or Dan or
No, I think we're, yeah. This seems to be about the simplest solution we can have the most economically feasible. It avoids any invasives. The guys have designed that structure so we can have a lot of latitude on where the people want to set the final grade. We do intend, once we get the lake stabilized to a reasonable level, we'll be sending out surveys asking, trying to get the people's input on where they really would like this this overflow structure to work. And it's not somewhat, it's more of a flood control issue, we feel than anything else, so.
Are there any more slides, I guess, just?
It looks like we might have one or two.
Okay, so this was that weave structure I was discussing. This will be kind of at the inlet end of that. It'll be kind of ups or yeah, inlet end of the agro drain structure. So this is going to be kind of your first kind of filtration or kind of, you know, basically what's going to grab the water and bring it to our structure here and then kind of that profile you see to the left is kind of how it will flow via gravity kind of away from the lake.
Next, next slide.
Next slide. And then I'll let into the gravel pit here. You see kind of the soil information to the right. Groundwater levels were, I believe, about like 12 to 13 and a half feet down from the bottom of that. I think we had a bottom, bottom elevation around 675 or 875, excuse me, of that gravel pit. So quite a bit lower than Pine Lake. You know, again, the flow to that gravel pit is going to be controlled by the structure in Pine Lake. So there's always the ability to be able to basically block off flow from Pine Lake so that nothing's flowing to this gravel pit. You know, in terms of like an emergency overflow, you know, that that pit would emergency overflow into the roadside ditch system and kind of be carried away. But again, quite a bit lower than Pine Lake. We had great infiltration tests performed there. We're getting about 23 inches per hour, I believe. So pretty sandy and gravelly there. So good spot. Next slide.
Yeah, it looks like that's, it looks like that is all the slides. All the slides that we have tonight. So we're going to move kind of right into this question and answer portion. So you can ask a question and I should make a note. So this is a time to add, to ask a question. If you have a statement that you'd like to make, just as you hold off until the hearing portion after the Q and A session before making that statement, we'll kind of go through the process and how we're going to go about doing that. And so you can either submit your question using the Q and A box, which you see at the bottom of your screen. You can type your question in and send it off to us. Or you can click the hand icon at the bottom of your screen and you can raise your hand in Zoom. If you're on the phone, you just need to select pound two. And what that will do is raise your hand in Zoom and then we'll unmute you. And so we're kind of going to be going back and forth between the Q and A box questions that are typed in and calling on people who would like prefer to raise their hand and ask a question. And I already have several typed into the Q and A box. And so I'm going to go ahead and read some of these off. Okay, so we've got one. Well, we have several questions related to the cost. So who will monitor this and what are the costs? The cost for installation as well as ongoing costs? Let's see this, like a sewer system, we have increasing quarterly costs, assuming the same as this goes through. So there are quite a few questions kind of related to that. So I don't know what you can say related to costs. And then Jason, I don't know if you want to address if and what that plays into the permitting process. So I don't know how you want to start with that.
Um, sure. I guess one thing I'll put in is, is for a lot of the questions on cost, that's a really going to be a question a lot to defer to the applicant on. Depending on circumstances, they, it may be information that we might, we might consider as part in as part of our overall review. It's generally, it doesn't play a major role, but, but it's certainly helpful information. Especially when we start talking about possibilities of like maybe looking at alternatives and things along those lines for, for alternatives to what's being proposed.
So can the applicant talk about costs at all? Or, Jim, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go ahead. You're unmuted.
Okay, well, so I guess number one, there is a, this is a legal lake level. So there is an assessment district already established for this. In terms of like cost estimates and stuff like that, we did, you know, give an estimate at, you know, both public hearings that we are not hearings, but public meetings that we had with stakeholders around the lake where we were talking approximately $3 million for total project costs. But those costs, again, there's an assessment district setup. This was set up in the 60s when the original pumping project occurred to bring the lake up. And that's how those costs would be defrayed. They'd be assessed to the people within that district over however, whatever years that, you know, whatever years that Jim, Jim decides, I would say the joint lake level authority decides, so.
Yeah, thank you for that response. I have another question. Are you confident it will work? Will the, won't the water just drain back into the water table? So I'm not sure if you can speak anything related to the confidence of the project that's going to do what it needs to.
So, um, you know, there's been numerous studies out there that kind of showed that groundwater is moving from kind of east to west. So you know, there's many people know about the springs in the ridge line on the west side of, you know, just west of Pine Lake. So the general groundwater movement moves towards the west, towards the Gunn River Basin. So with it being a gravity pipe and things like that, we're, you know, fairly confident it's not going to flow back in the lake and bubble back in the lake because we have those good infiltration rates and emergency outlet is going to be below, you know, the lake level, the legal lake level of 890 or whatever, whatever level that's being set, whether it be 892 or whatever, you know, the end level is going to be, it's, it's, you know, our emergency spillway from that gravel pits lower than that. So.
All right, thank you. And thanks to everyone for these questions. So one comment is on the diagram showing the pipe running down the middle of the road. And why would it not run along the side? I guess, can you just elaborate where the pipe specifically would be as it relates to the road?
We expect it to be down the side of the road. We don't see, I mean, we've got the, we've got a resolution from the the county road commission to allow us to run in their easement. And we're, we, we've sent a resolution to Gunplain and Prairieville both because by law you have to have all of them to sign off to be in the easement, but we don't expect to be tearing up the road to do it. That would be a cost that we don't want to incur if we can help it.
Okay, yeah, thank you for elaborating on that. It looks like we have a hand raised. So we will call on Ted DeVries or DeVries. Ted, we're going to unmute you on our end. Looks like you're unmuted. And then you can unmute yourself on your end and ask your question.
Yes, just to clarify, the assessment district is going to change for Pine Lake because the one that was created back in the 60s is missing probably over 100 parcels that are currently, and I, Jim can probably address this because it sounds like it'll be addressed at the day, at the, the day of review or the day of determination. So but I just had heard that they mentioned the current assessment district is what's being used and that's, that's not going to happen. So I'm currently trustee with Prairieville Township.
Okay. I guess any, anything you wanted to add to that? I guess Jason or Tim or?
We've got plan at the, the public hearing, we will have to. Kevin Harris has already showed us numerous properties. The original 600 and change were set in 69, and there's been a lot of splits in the district, which we'll have to take, I mean, in any drain project or project of this size, you got to go back and review the all the properties in it. And like Ted said, Kevin's, I don't know if they've found 100 more than what we knew was there originally, but
It's over 100.
Is it over 100? So
Well, the original one was 532. And currently, when I talked with Kevin, he was somewhere between 630 and 650.
Okay. I knew when we had the one public meeting, we mailed out to 600 properties at that time. So must be there's a bit, a few more than what we knew of, so.
Yeah, there was, well, he wasn't including all the island properties that so that made a big difference.
Yeah, cool.
Well, we're actually going to have to move on to another question. We have a lot of questions to get to here, but I appreciate the question and see here. There's some concern that as far as, and I'm going to try to just start identifying the numerous questions on here and kind of grouping some together because we have a lot of them in here. And only a limited amount of time, there's concern that the low level of the established lake level is too low for many homes, I guess. And the question is, well, they, that this should be discussed and need to understand how the lake level will be established. So I guess, I don't know if you can elaborate, I think, anymore on, on that lake level that was established and I don't know, maybe how or why. Is there anything we can add to that?
Let me give you a little bit of quick background. In the six, 69, they set 891 as a high level, 890 even as a low level with the intent of turning on the pump if it got below 890 and shut it off at 891. In the 90s, they came back and went to court over a course of five years to raise that high level to 892. And they did have any progressive A and E do a quick study. They said there was four and a half percent of the properties were impacted at 892. So our thinking is we're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 892, probably. The lake does come down over the summer. So if we have a limiting factor of 892, it's going to go down, but the court order said there is to be seasonal variations. So we don't want to set, and like I say, when we get, once we get it stabilized, we want, we're going to be sending out surveys like we've done to other lake levels that we did to try to get the people's input. We don't want it so low that they can't get through their channels. But we don't want it so high that anybody's flooded.
All right, I think that helps. And I'd like to follow up with this, I guess, a similar related question on, you know, lowering the lake levels and if we're planning on dredging already low areas such as channels.
Were we planning on it? Not that I know of. Got to hope.
Yeah, and then another, another one related to that assuring continuing X. I guess, is there anything else? I guess, related to continue access on channels because there's some concern that.
Right, yeah, that's why we don't want to get them too low. I mean, our belief is 890.5. The engineers were sharp enough to say, we should make this that if there was ever a court action to force it to 890.5, we have the option, but it isn't our intent to take it down to that because, well, like I say, if you had a really dry summer, you could be below the, the low level that was set in 69.
So if I can add something to that, so there's no dry channel dredging or anything proposed as part of this project. This project is about creating an outlet, providing relief to flooded areas and to kind of alleviate some high high, high lake level. So no dredging, just working on the outlet and the, you know, actually maintaining the, the lake level here.
Okay, can you talk a little bit about the test pump and what the purpose is? There was a question on test pumping.
We've got our infiltration tests done and our borings done, and we believe that the gravel pit will take the water, but it would be foolish on our part not to do a test run. We're hoping to pump a month or two months even this fall to see that the gravel pit takes the, the water. We'd, we'd hate to put a pipe all the way down there and find out that it doesn't take it like we expect it to.
Okay. And then can you talk a little bit more of the location of where this is going to be in the lake? I think there was a question in here, and if it was going to be in the middle of the lake.
If anybody knows where.
Pine, so we're Pine Lake Boat and Motor is, and then there's a kind of a campground there. Shelter Resort kind of just north of that. You know, the, the intake for this thing, it's going to be kind of either right on the shore, just off the shore. We're not, it's not going to be in the middle of the lake or anything like that. It's going to be, you know, a near shore inlet to this system. But it's going to be right around, you know, between Shelter Resort, you know, where we have it proposed is between Shelter Resort and Pine Lake Boat and Motor just west of, or just east of Duster Road there.
Okay, and then I kind of another related question to the structure and the drain system. How will the drain system be protected? Like from vandalism and monitored so that the lake doesn't get drained?
So the, the cover on the board structure is lockable. And, you know, at least the weave structure will be out and we can bolt down the, the rim of that. We can bolt down to make sure people just can't pull it off. But at least the gate or the boards will be locked.
Okay, thank you. And then a question, who, who is the petitioner? Is the majority or not supportive who live on the lake?
Jim, you want to cover that one? This isn't a drain project, therefore there wasn't a petition that said it in motion. We had our public meeting three years ago and we had roughly between four and 500 property owners there. And we did it basically with a raise of hands. Do you guys want something done? And pretty much all the hands went up. And we felt that we should move forward. We are the delegated authority. And like I say, we were at 894.5. The court order says 890.5 with seasonal variations. We felt that four feet high is a little more than a seasonal variation. So we should do something for them. And we toured different houses that were in a lot of need of help. Island Drive is real bad when it gets high. There's numerous other properties that are impacted.
Okay, yeah, I guess this kind of adding to that, there was a question exactly how, how many buildings were affected or have been affected at the highest level?
Well, like I say, in, in the court order from Judge Schuster from 1998, their findings were there was four and a half percent of the 600, so roughly 30 to 40 homes that were severely impacted at 892. Our guesstimate is you add another two feet, you're going to probably double or triple that, that severely impacted.
And just to add to that, too, there we had county roads that were underwater. There was definitely impediment to emergency vehicle access and things like that going on when we had the, you know, the 894 ish levels out there. So it wasn't just the homes. There was a couple of different roads or a few of the roads around the, around the lake itself that were actually flooded and underwater.
Okay, do you have any, there's a question on the current lake level. What is the current, does anybody know what the current lake level is, I guess, in the context of?
I believe we're right at around 893.5 right now. It might be a little bit lower than that. That was a week old.
Yeah, I was going to say, 893.5 was end of July and into August.
Okay. And I have some question on the timeline as far as the, this project timeline. If you have a best case scenario or worst case scenario, if you talk about the timeline for this work.
Yeah, with, with luck, our pumping will prove out this fall if we have time to pump it. Once we prove that it'll take water at a regular rate and infiltrate well. We have a lot of steps still to go through. The engineers have to put together the final plans. We have to get a bid. We have to do the public hearing. We have to go back in front of the county commissioners, both counties, because both Denise Menemar from Elegant and Berry County are we're co-authority. So it has to go to both county commissions to sign off on the final plans and then we could move forward. So I would estimate possibly next summer we can build the infrastructure. But we ain't guaranteeing anything because, well, it's just the way things are right now. You can't guarantee anything anymore.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that response. Was there any environmental studies done to find out the impact on wildlife for the project?
Yeah, so those studies were all provided to Eagle and I see Jason adding this up and down there. So wetland studies were done. There was an invasive species study done. There was water temperature studies done. There was, we hired a herpetologist, I can't, I have trouble saying the name, but he basically went around and studied habitat and was looking for endangered species, threatened endangered species. Cricket frog was one of them. He identified habitat for kind of numerous. And again, this was all provided to Eagle. I don't believe he found any cricket frogs out there, but what he did, what he did find and what he did kind of make an opinion of his report on is that you know, with the water levels being as high as they are, it does impede the habitat for some of these threatening endangered species that may exist around the lake. So lowering the lake level to somewhere near more than normal level, you know, with those fluctuations would be a benefit to those, those species around the lake. There's been monitoring wells placed around the lake. Some of you have probably seen that. There's been geotechnical investigations at several different parts of the lake. So there's been, there's been, yeah, quite a few environmental studies completed here.
Just to jump in a little bit too, is a lot of this information should be available on Eagles website, My Waters. So for anybody who's maybe made comments from the public notice or for the public hearing online, a lot of those documents are available for someone to download and look at.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. Thanks to everyone for that response. We're at time, but I want to squeeze one more question in before we move on to kind of the hearing portion of this. How will homes, how problems to people with their homes and their property in the area receiving water? And to runoff streams, the, how will those be addressed if people are having issues that result of this project?
I don't know if. I guess clarify is that downstream? I guess clarify is that downstream property owners or what's, can that question be clarified?
Yeah, how will, I'll read a verbatim. How will problems to people with homes and property in the area receiving water through springs or streams or roadway runoff, et cetera, be addressed?
Are these people that are already impacted because of the high water?
I, I only have what's in the question. Um, property in the area receiving water through springs or streams or road runoff be addressed? Area that are receiving water through springs or streams. So like, it sounds like if there, if homes are receiving water by some, by roadway runoff, um, running on their properties through different means, it sounds like. It sounds like if there's, as a result of this project, they're getting watered on their properties running on, run on. That's the way I'm interpreting it.
I mean, I guess, um, you know, hopefully for the people within, you know, affected by the high water within Pine Lake, you know, the waters will be lowered to more normal elevation. So they won't, you know, you know, they won't have some of those waters, you know, I guess. If I'm understanding this right, there was, there was, I know there were numerous roads underwater when the lake was at its highest point. So those flood conditions would be alleviated. Um, you know, in terms of, you know, downstream, you know, owners or somebody that may be along kind of receiving, uh, waters, we have the ability to shut this down, I guess, anytime, you know, in terms of, um, you know, the structure, so. Yeah, I mean, the primary objective of this project is obviously to lower the lake level within Pine Lake. The proposed outlet methodology is infiltration into the groundwater. Um, I would just leave it at that.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks for answering those questions, taking a shot at um, answering all of those. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to get to them all. And thanks for everyone for asking all these great questions, but we have to kind of move on to the next part of the hearing tonight. Um, but before we do that, in case you don't want to make a statement, which is kind of what we're going into is, is the hearing portion, we have the chance to make a statement on this application and project for the record. Uh, there's some other ways you can submit a comment, uh, through our My Water system uh, to provide your comments directly through My Waters, um, at this link that you see in front of you. This link is going to get put in the chat. So you can submit a comment directly through My Waters uh, by mail, and I'm going to read this off because we have people who are listening on the phone. Uh, so by mail to E G L E, Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, seven nine five three Adobe Road, and that's spelled A D O B E Road. Uh, Kalamazoo, Michigan, four nine zero zero nine. Uh, the comment period is going to be open for ten days, which is September tenth. So you have ten days to make any additional comments after tonight. All right. So now we're going to transition to the hearing portion. So, uh, I'd like to invite Jason to read the opening statement.
Great, thank you, Ryan. It started, so good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Combs and I am the district representative in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I'll be serving as a hearings officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number H P F dash T T nine zero dash Z J R V six. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I'll begin with some background information about why we are here tonight. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I'll outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments and we will spend the majority of time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read the closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks and building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, nineteen ninety four P A four fifty one as amended. We are here tonight because Berry County Drain Commissioner Jim Dahl has proposed to lower and maintain the water level of Pine Lake approximately two point four feet to an approximate elevation of eight nine zero point five by installing a twenty-four inch diameter storm sewer system with a weep structure in wetland and Pine Lake bottom land. Wetland impacts will come from installation of the storm sewer system in well and in an area approximately thirty-five feet long, two feet wide and two feet deep and removal of wetland vegetation in an area approximately a hundred feet long and approximately twenty-seven feet wide. Lake bottom land impacts will come from dredging approximately, approximately twenty-one cubic yards of bottom land for placement of the weep structure in an area approximately ten feet long, eight feet wide and seven feet deep. Dredging approximately fifty cubic yards of bottom land for placement of the storm sewer structure in an area approximately forty feet long, five feet wide and six point seven feet deep. Dredging approximately fifty cubic yards of bottom land, then placing approximately fifty cubic yards of angular rock riprap about six to twelve inches in diameter in an area approximately twelve feet long, eighteen point seven five feet wide and six feet deep. And placing approximately one cubic yard of piece stone in an area approximately ten feet long, eight feet wide and six inches deep. The drawdown rate will be approximately six inches per day. Water from the system shall be dis- discharged to an upland location, which is what was shown earlier in the, in the, in the hearing. Uh, the proposed project will decrease water levels in approximately a hundred and thirty point six nine acres of wetland, including approximately eighty-eight acres of submerged wetland. Now, in order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Part three oh one inland lakes and streams and Part three oh three, wetlands protection of Act four fifty one. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the stream and wetlands. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of our, of Part three oh one of Act four fifty one, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by section three zero one oh six of Part three oh one. Number one, the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. Now oftentimes people are wondering what the, what the public trust and riparian rights are. So I'll quick give a brief description of what that is. So riparian rights are defined in statute as one, having the access to navigable waters. Two, uh, dockage to otable waters or warfage. Three would be the use of water for general purposes such as bathing and domestic use. And four, uh, the title to natural creations, which is essentially, uh, basically the natural buildup of maybe sediment, things like that along a shoreline. Now, public trust is defined as being the paramount right of the public to navigate and fish in all inland lakes and streams which are navigable. Uh, the second thing is that perpetual duty of the state to preserve and protect the public's right to navigate and fish. Three would be the, there's the paramount concern of the public and the protection of air, water and other natural resources of the state against pollution, impairment and destruction. And lastly, the duty of the state to protect the air, water and other natural resources of the state against, uh, against pollution, impairment or destruction. So now going back to three oh one, so the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty one, Eagle is charged to make the following indications as required by section three oh three one one of Part three oh three. Permit for enacted and for an activity listed in section three oh three oh four should not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest and that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. In addition, a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. And also a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows either of the following. Either the proposed activity is primarily dependent on being located in wetland or that a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the Pine Lake drawdown permit application an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We'll be happy to make use of, to, to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments. But before I do so, I need to mention that the notice of of this hearing was published in the Union Enterprise on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two and the Hastings Reminder on August twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. Step one, or first, the applicant and/or their consultant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Second, we will then call on those who've indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on all those that raised their hand in their Zoom toolbar that they would like to make a comment if they haven't already been called upon. As a reminder, if you're participating in this hearing via telephone only, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You may also submit your comments to Eagle via My Waters, email or U S mail. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name in any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given four minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time is ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be a part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from the date of this hearing, ending on September tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the Sunday public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a pair, a permit for the project as proposed or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Waters website and searching for the application number H P F dash T T nine zero dash Z J R V six. Thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
Yeah, thanks for reading that off, Jason, and for giving the opening statement. Um, so I have a list of seventeen names. And so the way we'll do this is I'll read, read a name to give a comment and I'll also read the next person in line so that you know that you're up. Uh, as Jason had mentioned, you'll have four minutes to make your comment. Um, please list your name and organization if you have one. It's going to be one comment per person. Uh, and I also want to mention that I think in Zoom, it states that this meeting will go until eight. We're actually going to go until everybody has an opportunity to make a comment if it happens to run past that. Um, so we'll start with the people I have on my list. It's those seventeen people. Once we're through that list, uh, then we're going to go to anyone who has their hand raised and who hasn't already made a comment. Uh, so we're going to go ahead and start here. So, uh, what we'll do is I'll read the name, uh, and then we'll unmute you on our end. You can unmute yourself on your end, begin your comments. Um, I'll also give you a one minute heads up uh, at three minutes to let you know you have one minute left, um, and that your time will be up at four minutes. So with that, the first person, uh, that I have on my list is Mike Fenning. And then after Mike is going to be John Datillo. So Mike, we're gonna look for you and try to unmute you on our end. So just give us a second here to try to. Okay, Mike, looks like you are. I'm muted on our end.
Yeah, I did unmute on my end.
Okay, you're, you're all set. You can begin your comment, Mike.
Right, my, my comment is related to the proposal itself. Uh, I think, uh, I take exception, I guess, to the, to the verbiage after a conversation that I had with, with Jim. Uh, the statement that says lower and maintain the water level of Pine Lake approximately two point four feet to an approximate level of eight ninety point five feet. Um, I think that comment is where, is where a lot of people have some consternation. Uh, and after my conversation with Jim, it seems like that verbiage should, should be more akin to, to a maximum low level of eight ninety point five because as I understand, uh, from my conversation with Jim and also with the, the comments that they're making today, nothing is set that says if this thing goes through, they're immediately going to draw it down to eight ninety point five. There, the, the intent is, as I understand it, is that they're going to, uh, find, uh, you know, the work towards what a reasonable level might be. So I, I believe that the way that the thing is stated right now is not accurate to what Jim and his crew are, are planning to do.
Any further comment, Mike?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you for making the comments tonight. Um, we're going to go on to our next person in line, and that is John Datillo. And after John, it's going to be Susan and Robert Handley. So John, we're going to find you uh, in the attendee list. Looks like you're unmuted on our end, John. You can unmute yourself on your end. And then begin when you're ready.
Well, I guess my concern is just, uh, just as Mike said, how low is too low? Uh, we live in a cove area and, and naturally we can be obstructed with uh, lily pads and so forth. So my concern is that level is too low, uh, the eight ninety point five.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, John. All right, next, uh, on our list is Susan and Robert Handley. And after Susan and Robert, it's Nick Vitellaro, Vitellaro?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep, you're, we can hear you. You can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Um, I should say that Pine Lake is a jewel whose historical fluctuations um, have occurred since nineteen twenty and probably longer. I feel like, you know, messing with Mother Nature, especially given a time when most of our planet is suffering with drought is highly, you know, dang, it's dangerous. So I'm, I'm not quite sure I understand now that the level is going down and many of the people on the lake have already put up structures. What percent of the people are still at risk? I haven't heard the exact number. So I'm curious to know that because I do see, we, I travel the lake almost every day on my pontoon boat around and I see in the past year, probably twenty-five seawalls go up. So I'm going to guess that those people were the people that had a lot of, uh, issues with the waterfront. Um, I live in Hubbard's Cove and my family and I have been working diligently to remove three, a three, we removed three tons of purple loose stripe from the front of our cove, in front of our property here. So when, when you spoke of the, um, studies that were done on wildlife and invasive species, I'm just curious, uh, did that purple loose stripe show up on there? And how are you addressing that? Because Pine Lake is riddled with it. Um, I am a gardener and I can tell you, I identify it all over the lake. It's very bad here. Um, so that is a concern of mine, you know, that the pubbers cove is going to become a mud puddle. It's going to be mucky because when we remove that purple loose stripe, I can tell you it's just muck out there. And you take two feet of water out of that and we're going to have a mud puddle that nobody can get throughout here. Um, and then my last comment would be about, you know, again, putting water back into the lake. That's only going to be possible if there's water to put back into the lake, people. If we take the water out and we just have a well that's going to put it back. If there is a water shortage in the area and people are like out in California and Arizona suffering, they're not going to let us pump water back into our lake when they need it for drinking. So, um, I, that's all I want to say. I am passionate about, you know, if this does go through. So, um, I, that's all I want to say. I am passionate about, you know, if this does go through, it being a very minimal drop because the coves will need to be dredged. They're very, they're very low, and I implore someone to come out and take a look, drive your boat through here and put a stick down and look at the muck that's down there because it's going to be a stinky mess. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, uh, next up is Nick Vitellaro, uh, and then after Nick is Scott Cook. So Nick, uh, looks like you're unmuted on our end. Uh, you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Um, I'm not bringing, uh, my name is Nick Vitellaro. I, I live on Lake Three. Um, I've been a resident since twenty eleven, so I've seen the fluctuation, especially when the lake level is very low. Um, so I'm not going to bring any comment, to be honest, I, I, but I do want to reiterate, I, I do think as part of the petition, we need to reword the eight ninety point five. That is the lake levels. I understand that if it gets to that point, we need to actually put water back in. I think we need to correctly establish what this new low is and what that drawdown is because as everyone has stated already, seasonally, the water level is going to already come down. And so if we draw down to a point beyond that, I just think it's going to be a lot of trouble. But I do, I know I'm only supposed to comment on the petition, but I want to kind of echo what was just said. The water level has come down. There's lots of fluctuation on the lake. Jim Doll stated that a bunch of people raised hands when this was at its worst, and I am empathetic for everyone who went through that. But I'm wondering now, knowing that there's three million dollars, four million dollars, five million dollars of potential costs to all the residents on the table. Why is there a lack of wanting to truly survey the lake residents and get a true call as to A, how many of homes are really impacted and B, who really wants to support this project? I, I'm, I'm struggling with why, uh, hand raising has led to this point. And there's a lack of accountability to say, well, let's really understand from all homeowners on the lake who are going to be impacted. Who wants this to be done?
Thank you for your comment, Nick. Right. Uh, next up is Scott Cook, and then after Scott is Michelle Gregg Marjor. Scott, looks like you're unmuted. You can begin your comment when you're ready.
First of all, thank you for holding this meeting on behalf of everybody on the lake. This is just a two-step quote that I'd like to make sure is available to everybody. Water will always go to its lowest point. Doesn't matter which planet you're on or which country you're in. It will always migrate to the lowest point. With the approval by Eagle D N R of all the seawalls that are going up, which are straight-line seawalls, not designed to protect what's there, but to stop the water from coming in, there are untold dozens of seawalls where that property is no longer taking on any water or its fair share of the high water, which is probably artificially raising the water levels in our lake. Because these homes no longer take on any water, and those that don't have a seawall are now taking on this extra burden, which I believe is one of the reasons our lake is a little artificially high compared to other lakes in the area that have gone down. Secondly, if we get to the point that this lo- lake level is lowered down too far, and I've lived out here for over thirty years, we have had to take our watercraft out of the water in August. Unable to navigate the bay from which we live in and unable to afford two hundred feet of dock in order to continue to use the lake. Anybody that believes that our pumping system will replenish our lake, keep in mind the following, this lake is spring-fed, which comes from the aquifer. The same water that you're going to be pumping from, from those water pumps into the lake are taken out of the same aquifer that feeds this lake. I do not believe that it can possibly keep up with the level with, where to be required should we get too terribly low. And I also have great concerns if we allow this to get too low, that additional cost of having to dredge between lakes will have to be done in order for lake-to-lake navigation. And then there'll be people who live in the smaller bays who will be left out in the cold unless everybody is going to agree to say, let's dredge all the bays on top of it. I would just like everybody to contemplate the changes that are being made and hopefully help make the correct one. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, uh, next up is Michelle Gregg Marjor and followed by Matthew Kaylee. So Michelle, it looks like you are unmuted on our end. You're welcome to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yep, it's kind of soft, but we can hear you.
Okay, I've been on the lake for a year and I immediately became part of Pine Lake Association, wanting to learn about my lake. Um, and the first thing I, first time I learned about it was this spring when I attended the meeting, and at the meeting, um, at the park, it was said that we would be following what's on the permit. So whatever is stated in this public notice permit is what would, we would be getting. And it, I'm confused, uh, because like today, there was a comment that said, once we're stabilized, then we'll be sending surveys out. And I, I just am concerned that it, once the lake is stabilized at the permit level, it's too late and things can't be undone. Um, as it is right now, the lake is low in a lot of areas, and I agree with the previous comments that it is a lot of muck. I'm the lady that's out there rowing all the time, and so I can see that water and I can see what's at the bottom. And I'm shocked at all the weeds and, and how low it is. Um, I think that you, you had mentioned that there was, you had mentioned a bunch of different laws, and one of them was um, that it affects our use of the lake. I don't think that we, as it's written right now, as this permit is written, I don't think we will be able to use the lake the way that we can now. And that is a concern to me, um, as a person that owns land here and enjoys this lake. Um, so I, and I, I don't think that we should make a decision and then say, well, if something happens, we can dredge because we would probably have to go through the same permitting process as we are right now, and a lot of steps to get dredging and a lot of money, I can only imagine. Um, it's, you know, and so the dollar signs just keep going up and up, and the quality of the lake for the, the people and the public keeps going down. Um, I would like to see this permit be more accurate as to what it, what you are really hoping to do. Um, because a lot of times it's being said, it can change, but then in writing, it says something else. So I'm, I'm new to this, but I'm a little bit confused. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. All right, um, next is Matthew Kaylee, followed by Armando Ayala. But we can hear you, Matthew.
All right, good evening. My name's Matthew Kaylee and our family, uh, we've been on the Pine Lake since, uh, the nineteen forties. And, um, we have watched the water levels go up, and we've watched them go down several different times over the years. Um, and I know that there's been a lot of people that, as the water goes up and goes down, uh, spent a lot of time and money and effort, uh, to protect their property, uh, from being eroded or washed away. My understanding is that years ago, and I don't know how many years ago, maybe a century ago, there used to be a bridge on Pine Lake Road uh, behind the general area of the current Pine Lake Boat Motor, uh, which allowed the water when, uh, it raised in the lake from the rainfall or snowfall, seasonal rainfall, uh, it allowed the, the water to, um, run off, leave the lake, run down, I believe, maybe the gun plane tributary. Uh, and when, my understanding is when the Pine Lake Road was at one point, um, paved and asphalted and made a more permanent road, the bridge was removed, which then turned Pine Lake into, uh, what we would call today Bowl Lake. So it's basically, you know, the shape of a bowl. And there's no place for the natural water to run off, um, which increases, uh, the holding power of the lake and the lake level rising and lowering, uh, just by evaporation and rainfall, uh, rather than the, the way it used to. Um, I am very grateful for all the work that Jim and Denise have done. Um, like I said, my family's been, uh, on the lake since the forties. Uh, we've dealt with this many times. We've heard about all the court, uh, issues that have gone on. Um, and it'd be nice to have something installed. Uh, as I said earlier, uh, the determining factor of the actual height, uh, is yet to be determined uh, of the lake level, uh, but to have something to, to maintain the lake level, uh, so that people, um, can use their property, uh, like lake property, uh, typically is used. Uh, currently, uh, we have sandbags all the way around our property. Uh, probably three, four feet high, uh, and there's no way to access the lake far as walking into the lake. You have to climb over the wall or go on the dock and then jump in the lake. So, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, something being done, uh, to regulate, uh, the lake level rather than just, uh, now having a bowl lake and relying on, uh, Mother Nature to, um, regulate it for us.
About one minute left, Matthew.
Yeah, so basically, again, uh, I'm sympathetic, uh, with all parties involved, uh, all homeowners. Like I said, we've been on the lake, uh, a long time, and, uh, I just want to thank everyone, um, for their involvement, and I, I hope that, uh, when the project is done, that there is something in place and that the, the majority, um, of the, the property owners on the lake are happy with it. So thanks for listening to my comments.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Matthew. All right, next up is Armando Ayala, and then after Armando is Samantha McNaughton. So Armando, we'll find you. If you are um, on the phone, you can raise your hand in Zoom and, uh, by selecting pound two, and we will unmute you, um, if you're on the phone, and it looks like, and then Joel, are you finding Armando?
No, but on the spreadsheet, it says it was canceled by himself.
Okay, okay, gotcha. All right, so and then if, um, and if Armando, you are on the, on the phone, we'll get, we'll get back to you and get the hands raised. Um, Samantha McNaughton is next, and then follow after Samantha is Elena and Joe, um, Langon. So Samantha. All right, it looks like you're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Great. Um, so like you said, my name's Samantha McNaughton. Um, I am a Pine Lake resident for the last two years. Um, I live in Hubbard's Cove. Um, so first of all, I'd just like to say thank you again, um, to Jim and the L R E team and all the work that's been done, um, to assess this project over the last couple of years. Um, you know, when we moved into our house, the water level was very high, and this was definitely much more of a concern on people's minds in the area. Um, I guess my stake on the project overall is it's important to have a system in place to remove water in case we get into a, another flooding concern, um, timeframe in the future. Uh, I think with, you know, global warming being what it is, we have the potential for more extreme weather, both in droughts as well as, um, high amount of, of rain, uh, for, for flooding. So having a system in place to deal with that high water in the future, um, is pretty important. And just because the water level has come down naturally now, um, I don't think we can guarantee that it'll stay that way for the years to come. And, you know, if we get in the situation that we have very high water again, I wouldn't want to restart all of the work that's been done here. Um, but I'll reiterate some of the concerns that have been mentioned by other people in terms of the final lake level. Um, as been, has been mentioned several times, uh, we want to make sure that the waters remain navigable, um, to enjoy the water the way we do now and ensure we don't have any impact to our property value, um, in the future, to be able to, to swim and boat and, um, you know, make use of, of our property. Um, in my opinion, I think, you know, a final high water level, um, of the level that we have now would be appropriate to ensure that we don't have water getting too low by the end of the season after, you know, the significant amount of, um, drop we see year to year. Um, but I think, you know, it's important to make sure that the, the final project proposal has those details in place and that we, we don't end up in a situation where our water level gets too low. Um, yeah, and I think that's it. So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. All right, um, next up is Elena and Joe Langon, and after Elena and Joe is Molly Etwine.
I don't see Lena or Joe Langon either.
Okay. Okay.
Moving on to Molly.
Yeah, let's move on to Molly, and then after Molly will be Ray Flint. So Molly, it looks like you are unmuted on our end. You can, uh, feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Molly Etline, and our family has had a cottage at the tip of the westernmost sunset point on Lake One. It's near Chamberlains Mar- Marville Marina. Our grandparents purchased this cottage in nineteen forty-five from the original owners, Dr. and Mrs. Lemuel Clark, who had built it at the turn of the nineteenth century. So the original white cottage and the two-story red boathouse still stand. And the bump out on the back of that boathouse was the stable for Dr. Clark's horse when he made the trip from Otsego. I give this information because we do have some perspective on lake levels from over the last seventy-five years since we owned the cottage, and we have many pictures from the early nineteen hundreds of it. Our boathouse sits at that water's edge, and it's always been our yardstick for measuring water level. And we have seen the lake level go up and down often with the various cycles of nature. However, four years ago, the water breached the level of the foundation, and since then, we have had continuously had four to twelve and even more inches inside the first floor. This is an extraordinary change, and it seems impossible to attribute totally to the cycles of nature. But we understand that we will never have the long stretch of beach that we once had, that, that was a gift. And we are in discernment as to how our family will raise up and save our red boathouse so that it continues to be one of the many landmarks on Pine Lake. But we need some relief from the water level. There is no margin for us, especially with the boat traffic and the size of boats. We know they are here to stay. And we embrace them. But we also support a water level compromise that allows all home, most of the homeowners to enjoy their cottage, especially the ones on the coves. When I was a kid, you never took a boat electric motor into the cove without getting caught up, and I really do appreciate their need. And I appreciate the need to, to have comfortable passage in the channels. So we really want what's best for everyone, and we understand that the lake belongs to everyone. And, uh, I have really appreciated the comments that came before me. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for your comments. All right, Ray Flint is next, and then after Ray is Robin and Ed Apirucci. So Ray, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready.
Awesome. Hi, this is actually Lynn Flynn, his wife. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. Um, and thanks again for having the hearing to listen to people. So just a couple of comments. My husband Ray and I live in what's known as the hole in the wall on Lake Four. Um, and we were actually at the hearing a few years ago that, um, was referenced when, um, it was stated that everyone raised their hand in favor of, of doing something. I didn't quite recall it that way. I think we all certainly felt for everyone that was struggling with water. But I don't think that we raised our hand in authorizing this type of necessarily investment or decision. Um, so I would just ask first of all that, much like we have to approve, um, signing off on the milfoil treatment every seven years, and all the homeowners get an individual vote. Get an individual vote on that because maybe not everyone can attend tonight. I think it's worthwhile to ask all the homeowners on the lake and I I agree with the people that already spoke and I think we all. Want everyone to be happy on the lake and find a solution. But as you mentioned before, what this. Legislation or rule is about too is around making sure that we can all enjoy the lake. And as I mentioned, we live in the hole in the wall. We're on the cusp of building a brand new house there as well. And it means a lot to us to be able to go out and enjoy not just the cove and the hole in the wall, but the rest of the lake and it concerns me. If we'll be even able to get out on either way that you come out of it. And it's an amazing lake and we want to be able to enjoy it. So I think you just need to look holistically at. You know, how we can do this and it concerns me. The lake level looks about what it was when we moved in in twenty seventeen. So I would just ask too that you can come back and ask all the people that live on the lake because maybe not all of them can join these hearings. Particularly when we're talking about kind of investment. And the impact to what their lives may be in their significant investments in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Robin and Ed Pierucci. And then after Robin and Ed, it's Joan Buttigieg. All right, Robin and Ed, it looks like you're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready.
Hi, this is Robin Pierucci. I also live in Hole in the Wall and in that wonderful little bay. And certainly it is with sincere apologies to those that have had issues with. The water rising. But I also do plead for a balance as we look at where to set the lake level. The the level that we're talking about, that's a landmark that was from forty years ago and the certainly. There's quite a number of variables that changed. So to claim that level automatically, I think is problematic. It needs to be. Reput through a risk benefit sort of thing. Once again, how do we help save? The landmarks that were so beautifully described, yet also not literally landlocked. People who currently enjoy access to the water. The it is so true, water is going to change, it's cyclical. And we in some ways risk breaking something that's for a large number of people not broken. Once again, I don't want to overstate for the folks that are fighting this issue. But we do need to really be very cautious about how low. In a man-made situation, we're going to take that water and destroy. The ability of a lot of folks to have access to that water. So thanks so much for allowing us to speak.
And thanks for your comment. All right, next up is Joan Buttigieg or Buttigieg. And then Mark Doster. Joan, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can begin unmute yourself and then begin when you're ready. And you should you should see a button on the kind of lower left-hand side to mute and unmute. Yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. When you're ready.
My name is Joan Buttigieg and I have been on the lake personally for over four years. The house that I live in. Or a cottage before this home have been here since the sixties. At one time, there was quite a bit of shoreline that was accessible. From the house, but it was grass covered. And you were able to walk the length of that area. To get to your dock to get into the water with the water being drained. That area will no longer be a nice grassy area, but it will be a mucky area that you. Certainly wouldn't enjoy walking on. We also have a swamp. Near our home on Lake Four that sustains ducks, blue herons. Fish, turtles and frogs and even crickets. And this swamp area will no longer exist. I believe that lowering the lake level at an excessive rate, which. I understand to be at least six inches initially. Would further harm the navigator, your ability to navigate the lake. I would like to see. Safeguards in place that after so many inches are drained off that it stopped. And everything is assessed again. From maps that have been posted on the Yelpers site, the. Channels between Lake Three and Four will be affected. And between Lake Two and Three will be greatly effective. Affected and this will hinder free navigation and your enjoyment. Of the lakes. I do believe that every homeowner on the lake should be polled. Not just a percentage to find out whether they feel that this is appropriate and necessary. And how it will affect not only their home value, but their enjoyment of the lake. Thank you for giving me my minute. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Joan. All right, so next up is Mark Doster and after Mark is Kathy Schnack. So Mark, you are unmuted on our end. You can feel free to unmute yourself and then begin your comment. And you should see a microphone icon that you can click probably in the lower left-hand side of your screen to. Unmute yourself so that you can make your comment. All right, I think what we'll do, Mark. If you're having trouble unmuting yourself, we'll give you another minute or two. We'll go on to the next person. And then we'll come back and see if if you've been able to. Fix whatever technically if you might be having. So we're going to move on to Kathy Schnack. And you can go ahead and unmute yourself, Kathy, and begin your comment.
Hello, thank you. And thanks for all the work that everyone's put in on this project. So I I appreciate everyone's points. Obviously, there's a lot of concern about the actual. Number as it relates to too low, but there's certainly a recognition that. The water is high and that there are many homes that suffer because of it. The purpose really of the project is simply to provide an outflow of water. And maintain a more consistent lake level range in the likely event that will continue to receive extreme weather and rainfall. This project then would help eliminate the potential for property damage, maintain property values. And ensure that all the lake activities that everyone has already talked about are uninterrupted. And then just another interesting point, the if you look at the national weather data. It suggests that extreme weather events and rainfall will continue and potentially increase in number. There's data at the US EPA. WWW.EPA.gov backslash climate indicators backslash weather climate. Just to help dimensionalize the ongoing risk of extreme floods. And again, the project is just to help maintain control in the event that we have another. Record four years of rainfall that added almost four feet to the lake. So appreciate all the work everyone's doing and I hope everyone has the right spirit in terms of. Helping elevate everyone's situation on the lake. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kathy. For your comment. And we will go back to Mark to see if Mark Doster to see if he was able to get his. Microphone and I'm not seeing. Mark, did we lose Mark, Joel?
He just dropped off.
Okay, so if you if you happen to still be listening, Mark, you can either make a comment, be those other methods we talked about, which I will go over again. After we wrap up this hearing part or you can try calling in by phone and making a comment that way. All right, so next up would be, this is the last person on my list is Renee Charette. And just trying to locate Renee. I'm not seeing Renee on here. Are you, Joel?
No, I do not.
All right, so now. What we will do is we'll go on to people who have the raised hands. If any of our callers on the phone would like to make a comment, you can just hit pound two. And what that will raise your do is raise your hand in Zoom and then we'll call on you in turn. So I'm basically going to call on people in the order that their hand was raised. So the next person up is Ken Eddy. So Ken, we are going to unmute you on our end. You can feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Hello. It was brought to my attention by witnesses are at that four hundred to five hundred person meeting. The Jim Dahl mentioned, they say that only about four hundred actual lake owners. Apparently, they're very familiar with all of the lake owners because of. Of their. They they work with a lot of the people on the lake and in their business. And I'm concerned that there's an impression that there is a majority. In favor of lowering the lake. And actually, apparently, a lot of the owners had a lot of friends and family that all stuck their hands up. So I just want to make that point. And I've been serving lake owners. I hope to get to all of them. Twelve percent is how much I've completed so far this week at this time. No one so far wants the levels lowered below eight ninety-two point seven. That's eight. Ninety-two point seven. I've especially been talking to the people with the most serious flooding problems. I'm really surprised. That they don't want the lake lowered any further than that. A lot of hard work has been put into installing these. Seawalls. And a lot of work has been done. I'm concerned that Jim hasn't isn't aware of all the work that's happened in the last couple of years. But that should be taken into consideration. The eight ninety-two point seven is about twelve inches below the current levels. Also, I think the survey should be done before starting the drawdown if that were to take place. And the drawdown should be taken in steps, not all at once. I would like to hear people's opinions. Before the drawdown and also do the drawdown. In 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 steps so that if we obviously drain the lake and we went too far and people are all upset. There's no way to bring that water back up. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. All right, next up is Jay Thompson and after Jay, it'll be Peter Seabert. Jay, we're going to unmute you on our end. Looks like Jay may have lowered his hand. All right. Oh, are you on?
I am.
All right.
I just wanted to reiterate, the water right now is at historic highs right now. And if you haven't lived on the lake for ten years, you have no perspective as to what the lake. Was ten years ago, what the navigation was like, where the water was low. And and in comparison to what it is now. And so because there's been no mitigation of the water level in the last five, six years. As it's come up, people have gotten used to these new high levels and of course, they don't want it to go down. But for those of us that have homes that have been here since the thirties that are generational. And we've lost eighteen trees. We have ancient oak trees that are hundreds of years old. That are dying because of a high water table. It's clear to us that for us to survive. The levels need to go back down, maybe not to the historic levels. But but at least to what you're talking about as a compromise. Now, people have built new in the last three and four years and they've done it based upon the new high water levels. But that's not the way it was. So this is all new. This is historic. You can come by my property and look at the. Trees we've had cut down, count the rings and you can stop at a hundred. And understand that we've never had water levels this high before because those trees would be dead long before now. So. In in my humble opinion. And and in our plight around Chamberlains Marina, the the beautiful red boathouse. That was mentioned, it's a problem. It's a serious problem. And we still have sandbags. We still have berms. We still have some pumps running twenty-four seven. To hold back, hold back the water. I'm forty thousand dollars into this, forty thousand. And and so I need this and I'm I'm, you know. I I would like to consider the people that like the water level where it is now. The chances are they haven't been here. For long and for the people that are high up on the hill, of course, you know, they they don't want to spend this money. They don't want to be assessed. Extra taxes, but for us, we 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 look forward to the water going down. And getting closer to what it was historically. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Right, next up is Peter Seabert and then after Peter will be Bob Braithor. Right there. So Peter, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can begin your comments when you're ready.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make a comment about that eight ninety, eight ninety and a half lake level. Originally, that was court designated as the minimum lake level. Then at a later court hearing, the judge arbitrarily decided to throw out the minimum level. And decided there should, there was no minimum or maximum setting. And in in the court documents, he states that the eight ninety and a half is now the normal lake level. That was something he arbitrarily decided. Like I said, originally, eight ninety and a half was the minimum level at which time. We would have turned on the pumps. Now, the pumps from what I understand in the past, after they were installed. Ran for about six months and the the most they could do is keep up with evaporation. So as far as ever being able to build up the water again, that isn't going to happen. As far as precipitation going down the road, if you look at a chart at the average precipitation. From nineteen seventy to the current time, you'll see that the average precipitation has steadily climbed. We've had low periods, we've had extra high periods, but overall, it's been climbing. And if I understand correctly. As the earth's temperature increases, the amount of saturation in the atmosphere increases also. In our area, that probably means more rain. So going forward, we can expect. Probably that we're going to have higher water levels. So something needs to be done. As far as being able to get into the low areas around the lake, I've been here since nineteen seventy-eight. And all the areas that were brought up, I used to sneak my boat in those, no matter how low the lake level was. The worst it got was over by Spring Point, the hull of my boat ran aground in the middle of the bay. But I was still able to navigate around the outside perimeter. So. I don't feel too bad about the low level, but I I agree also. It should it should be definitely be higher than the two ninety and a half. Ken Eddy was the one that spoke before that had been going around talking to different people. And the level that he was talking about seems to be a pretty happy level with most of the residents. The Pine Lake Marbelle Marina are the ones that have had the worst. The Pine Lake Marbelle Marina are the ones that have had the worst problems where the water was inside their, the actual marina. And from what I understand, they would be happy at that level also. So that's the level I guess I would like to see is, I believe, he said it was what, eight, somewhere just below 893. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Alright, next up is Brad, Bob Braithor or Brighter? And then Andrea Bernard. So Bob, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready.
Hello.
Can you hear me? Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, Bob Brighter and my wife Linda, we live on Lake Three. We have been on Pine Lake for about 36 years. We've seen many ups and downs of lake levels over the time. And the one thing I can say for sure is that I can guarantee that we'll never get an agreement from everybody on a certain lake level, you know. I think the people that were proposing that a survey be sent out is probably a wise decision and I would like to see that happen. I am curious, right now, you had mentioned that over the past couple of years, some of these state and county highways were flooded around the water. And I'm very curious, I do not believe that any of them are underwater right now when we're at the 893.5 level. And I think I would use that, at least in my estimation of trying to set the proper lake height. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Right, next up is Andrea Bernard and then after Andrea is a phoning caller ending in 5665. So Andrea, you can begin when you're ready.
Hi, this is Andrea Bernard. I'm the president of the Pine Lake Association. And I just want to say thank you guys so much because this is a lot of hard work that you've put in over the past three years. And I can't, I can't tell you how much we appreciate all the work and all the tees crossed and i's dotted along the way. All of the comment that I have heard tonight regarding lake level specifically, it's all great. It's great discourse. It sounds a little bit like a debate at times, but it's, it's really good feedback. But with that being said, I want everybody to understand and remember that this meeting, the purpose of this meeting is not to establish a new legal lake limit or not to establish what the drawdown is going to be. The purpose of this meeting is simply to allow Eagle to give us a permit, to give us recourse should we ever be flooded again. So, and I want to remind everyone as well that it's not just properties and homes, but it's also roads as well that were flooded and impacted. And when it gets to a point where roads are flooded as well as homes, emergency service vehicles cannot venture down these roads and that is simply unacceptable. So we do need to have a, we do need to have a method for which we can draw down the lake should a future flood occur. So again, I just want to reiterate to all my lake residents, thank you so much for the discourse tonight. However, please keep in mind, this is not a meeting to establish the new leak level. This is a meeting to ensure that we obtain our permit for this drainage project so we have recourse should we have flooding in the future. So, thanks so much, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. Alright, next is a phoning caller ending in 5665. We're gonna unmute you on our end and I think you should be getting a prompt to unmute yourself. And it looks like you're unmuted. You can go ahead and begin.
Hi, this is Kim and I just want to ask people if they've ever been out to Pea Island, if they've seen the trees that are so far underwater. Yes, that actually used to be an island. My grandparents bought the lake house over 70 years ago. We've had it in the family since then. The house itself is 100 or more years old. The trees are more than 100 years old. We've had a lot of them die and a lot of them been, been cut down and there's more that are dying still. When the water was so high, it was up over the septic tank. The septic tank lid was floating, as were a lot of my neighbors. So when you talk about environmental impact, you have to consider that too. And the environmental impact of continuing to have more and more trees die. We tried to put in a seawall several years ago. We were turned down. We were told we would have to be put, put in a rock seawall. And yet, since that time, Eagle has granted permits for all sorts of metal ones to be put in, which only pushes water on other people more. In addition, other people have filled in their lots because of the lake water rising, which continued to push the water over on other people. There are still houses that are unlivable, uninhabitable, that have been there for, for over 100 years. So I understand everybody likes the lake high because they've got these big ass boats with their big motors that go through the channels currently fine. But I remember riding with my grandmother some 50 plus years ago, lifting our, our motor as we go through the channels. It was no big deal. There were places in the lake where we didn't go. It wasn't that big of a deal. And that's the way it was. And just because the lake has came up since then, everybody's got used to it and everybody likes it. But I don't think there needs to be a survey done because obviously there are more people unaffected by the high water than there are affected by the high water. But when you look at the historic houses on the lake, the, where the houses were built, hundreds of years, they're now flooded and they have basements. And it's because of what has been permitted to be done and Mother Nature. Mother Nature has, has had heavier rainfalls and the permits, the coverage of bare land with McMansions that no longer absorb water and let it run into the lake also affects this. So we've all contributed to this lake water going up and we all need to help get it down to where it can be controlled without it flooding people out who've had houses there for 70 plus to 100 years. It, it, something needs to be done. And I, I appreciate the people with the big boats that want to get through the channels with no problems, but you wouldn't have done that even 20 years ago. There, there were times that my, we could drive on the outside of the trees that are now gone and dead and had to be cut because they're underwater. And, and they're gone now. So, you know, something needs to be done before this, this happens again. And even if it's cyclic, I don't agree with surveying people. I don't agree with that. Because it, it is a lake-wide problem and everybody, including Eagle, has had a little bit of a hand in contributing to making this problem. So we, we all need to contribute to making it go away. I'm done. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Alright, if anybody else is still on the line who has not made a comment yet and would like to make one, remember, if you're on the phone, you can select pound two or you can raise your virtual hand in Zoom, which you'll see is the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. I'll just give it a couple more seconds to see if there are any further comments from people who haven't commented yet. Alright, it looks like I have Scott Cook. Scott, before we unmute you, it's one, one comment per person. So we can take a comment if you have someone else on the line who would like to speak. Other than that, I will also provide the information on making additional comments and asking questions towards the end of this hearing. So Scott, will I go ahead and unmute you?
I just wanted to add something that I probably should have done earlier. It's, it's about the
Scott, we can't, we can't take any further comment. You already had your opportunity. So what I'll do is I'm gonna show you a slide in a couple of minutes where you can make further comments and, and also contact information for asking questions, but it's gonna be one, one comment per person for tonight's public hearing to make it fair for everybody. Is there any, anybody else who would like to make a comment if you haven't already done so? Alright, Nancy Conroy. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment.
Yes, hello. Thank everyone for their comments today. The only comment that I have has been apparently at today's public hearing, we have had this specific proposal placed before us that you have discussed, which is the drain over there on Lake One. Apparently, that proposal presumably is going to cost millions of dollars and assess all of the homeowners significant property tax increases if we do decide to ratify that project. And although that does sound like a good project, you stated that that would draw down the lake levels by approximately six inches over some period of time. But what I would like to hear is if there are any other proposed projects. Now, Matt Kaylee was alluding previously to the existence of a bridge or a pipeline over there by the Marina by Doster Road. And I believe there may be other proposals that could be more cost-effective that perhaps should be presented to the Pine Lake community to select between varying proposals. At this point, we've got the proposal that you have provided, but are there other proposals? Clearly, that pipeline could be a possibility and perhaps there's other ideas. So I don't feel that we should be limited only to the proposal that you have placed on the table today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Nancy. Alright, next up we have a phoning caller with the last four digits, 9481. So we have unmuted you on our end. You can unmute yourself. You can go ahead and make your comment when you're ready.
This is Seth Drake. I'm calling on behalf of residents of actually Shell Lake. And I'm curious if you guys know if the lakes are still connected and if the projects on Pine Lake will have a direct effect on Shell Lake residents. And if so, it, it would seem that it would be prudent and potentially a legal requirement to give notice to residents that will be affected by this proposition as well.
Okay, thank you for, for your comments. I can provide Jason's contact information if you have further questions after tonight's hearing. Is there anybody else who has not made a comment yet who would like to make a comment on this project? Alright, I'm not seeing any other raised hands. So with that, Jason, I would like to invite you to read the closing statement for the hearing.
Alright, thanks Ryan. See, thank you for your comments and in cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the, in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until September 10th, 2022. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. Just to remind those that may still want to submit a comment, comments can be submitted via My Waters, email or US Mail. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Yeah, I just want to, I guess, reiterate the additional ways to submit a comment. If we didn't, if you decided not to make a comment tonight or you have additional comments in addition to the comment you already provided, the link that Jason mentioned is in front of you and it should also be in the chat. And then I'm also gonna read this off again for the people who are on the phone. The mailing address for additional comments is gonna be Eagle Water Resources Division, Kalamazoo District Office, 7953 Adobe Road. Adobe is spelled A-D-O-B-E and that's in Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49009. And as Jason mentioned, the comment period is over for 10 days, which is September 10th. If you have additional questions, we have a lot of questions in there that we did not get to due to time constraints for tonight. You can contact Jason Combs and Jason's contact information is on the screen here in front of you. I'll also read this off for those on the phone. Jason's phone number is 269-568-2693. And again, that's 269-568-2693. And email address is C O M B S J 8, as in the number 8, at michigan.gov and Michigan is spelled out. So C O M B S J 8 at M I C H I G A N dot gov. And with that, Jason, is there anything else you have for us tonight before we wrap up? Any final comments or anything?
No, just, just want to say thank you again to everybody that attended and provided comments. And we'll, we'll be considering those as part of, as the permit application, the review of the permit application continues. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Jason, for being part of this hearing and thank to everyone who participated in it. Last thing I just have is that I want to, just a reminder that this public hearing was recorded and we'll be sharing a closed caption copy of that recording on Eagle's YouTube page. So with that, yeah, thank you all for participating in tonight's hearing and I hope you all have a great rest of your evening.